Yes, go ahead, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's planning commission meeting. We'll start off with Ro, Mr. Ro, please.
All right, Mark Herr.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Shannon Wallace. Robert Estrada.
Present.
Lynn Larson. Ellen Talbo is excused, she might possibly attend after 7:30, and Philip Combs.
Present.
Thank you, you've reached quorum.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience as well, I sent you a message, I'm not sure if you got that.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone had a chance to see the minutes from last meeting? Yeah?
Move approval is mailed.
Second. Thank you.
Take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And let's see, any changes to our agenda for today?
Actually, Mr. Chair, if we could reverse the order of the new business items, so childcare centers happens before the brewery and distillery discussion, I think that'll flow a little better for you.
Sounds great. All right, do we have anyone here for a public comment today? Anyone signed up?
No one for a public comment, Mr. Chair.
And let's go ahead and jump into the comprehensive plan docket for 2026.
Thank you. So, this evening is the public hearing for setting the docket for the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zoning map amendment process. This is something that you held a study session on at your last meeting, and, sorry, trying to get this out of your way. There we go. We're moving through the processes as per normal, meaning there'll be a hearing here at the Planning Commission, once that's concluded and you have your discussion and potentially edit the package, it goes forward as a recommendation from the commission to council. The process began back in July of 2025, there was a call for private applications, and two private applications for rezoning were received. Tonight, as I mentioned, is the public hearing. So, we went through these in more detail last meeting, but again, there's a total of 22, 12 of which are responding to state law changes, and so, really just verifying that the current city code or zoning is consistent with all of those bills, or if not, identifying the needed amendments to be consistent with each one of them. Number 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 are all either issues raised by council members, issues raised by planning and public work staff or other city staff about issues that could be corrected or improved within our code. From everything from, as you see there, that first one, just correcting the name for Pierce Transit, to talking about the horizontal mixed use that you as a planning commission ask be considered. The final two amendments are 2026 number 21 and 22. Those are the private rezone applications, one of which is to rezone a parcel from C2, Commercial 2, to NC2, Neighborhood Commercial 2. And then the final one is down in the Tillicum area, a request that was submitted to rezone from Residential 3 or R3 to Mixed Residential 2, MR2 is what that should say, or allow daycare centers independent in the R3 zone. So with that, the schedule going forward, if you are ready to take action, it would happen on October 1st, or later, if you need more time. And then after that, October 13th is when the study session will happen at the city council, and then they'll move through their legislative review, and at this point, take action on November 3rd to adopt the, should say, sorry, 26 docket. And then, as always, after that is done, the substantive review and drafting happens, and next spring, everything will come back to you for detailed review. So that's all for the preparatory comments to the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. So we have no one here, do we need to close the public hearing?
If you would mind opening it first, please.
Let's open the public hearing for any comment.
There is one person online, and I'm not sure if they want to testify. Jan Ghee, if you would like to testify, please raise your hand.
All right.
And if that's not happening, then this would be the only person, so if you would like to close public hearing, please do.
Let's go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, we have no unfinished business, so let's dive into our expanding zones where childcare centers are allowed.
Thank you. And again, I'll share, if you can give me just a moment. This is a very straightforward amendment, and it's kind of a continuation of what the city has already done. Okay, so just this year, in 2025, the state legislature adopted a new bill numbered 5509, and it expands even further than already has happened recently. The locations where a city must allow for childcare centers, and also allow for conditional use of a child, or the conditional approval of a childcare center in other areas of the city. As you see here, it's any conversion of an existing building or allowing new buildings as an outright permitted use for childcare in all zones except for industrial and open space. But then if it is an industrial or light industrial zone, we must allow a conditional use approval if it's on site, meaning if you had, I'm gonna be really bad at this, but if you had a factory and there were people on site wanting to have childcare right there in the building, that's something you could conditionally allow, but if it were to be on its standalone location in that zone, that is not allowed. We are, as a city, allowed to impose restrictions on the permit, including pickup and drop off areas and other life safety issues. The reason this is before you now is even though the bill was just adopted this year, and the deadline to actually comply with it is 2027 rather than 26, the city is recommending to you to go faster than that. We've already done a number of rezoning and updates to regulations regarding childcare, but if you look at this map, this comes from childcaredeserts.org. The areas where you see orange dots, and I know the municipal boundaries aren't clearly shown, but very roughly around, and then up, and then you've got Springbrook, and then up. The orange dots is what would be considered a childcare desert, meaning they are not close either to a school, or close to where there's a high concentration of residential areas where people may need childcare to be located. And so this is an opportunity to open additional locations for the development of childcare even, either in a new building or an existing structure. And these are also responsive to areas of the city that have more diverse, ethnically diverse, but also generally the poorer, lower income areas, and again, just that much more important to allow for childcare to be where people need it to be nearby their house. So, what would this turn into? It would be a table change, where you see all these blue letter Ps underlined, that's the new change to allow something outright. So you see daycare center in existing and new schools, existing or new churches, daycare centers for people on site, daycare centers or adult relatives in a separate business establishment located on the same site, an independent daycare center or preschool nursery school, excuse me. And then again, that idea of using an existing building, be it residential or commercial, in an area where you want to convert that either in whole or in part to a daycare center. So, all of the Ps mean it would be permitted outright per state law, and then where you see the letter Cs underlying, those are the changes to allow it as a conditional use in the industrial 1 and 2 zones. If there are changes, we're continuing to do the research, but if there are changes needed to the regulations, given where the expansion of the use will be, this will be brought before you, before did I do, I'm sorry, I just lost it, the October 1st public hearing on this topic, excuse me. So, as of now, for sure, this would be the change in the zoning itself, but if we need to be bringing some additional regulatory change, we will present that to you before your next meeting's public hearing. Scheduled, just one meeting behind essentially, the 26 comp plan docket, so hearing next meeting, and then action on the 15th of October, and then it would start its way through city council on November 10th. And that is all I have for this issue, unless there's questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Spear, just a couple of questions. One, I think, want to say that Maria Tobin and the South Sound Military Communities Partnership has done some pretty extensive research on this topic of childcare deserts, and it's something that will absolutely positively impact our community and the surrounding area immediately. But I do have one question. As it's written in there, it appears to be implied, but is there any explicit designation of ages for people that fall under this category? And specifically, what I'm asking about is, does the term daycare also apply to what we would now refer to as adult day homes? Is that an explicitly separate thing?
Yes, adult, adult family care, adult, or day, adult family homes, excuse me, is separate and apart from a daycare center. Daycare centers are intended-
When I read daycare, I read children-
Yes.
-that are of school age.
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, they're two different distinct uses, and they are zoned differently.
Thank you.
Mr. Estrada has a question as well. Pass. Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Number one, I don't think we can have too many daycares, because it's their entire dire need, and there's, because the regulations that the city and state have about operation of daycares is pretty darn complete, and there's no reason to not be able to allow them to, to go anywhere in the city. Number one. Number two, that brings about a little bit of a worry as to whether there are any minimum standards for a daycare to operate, as in number of children served, or something like that, because, because we're now allowing it to go anywhere, that's, there are even fewer barriers to entry of a person wanting to go into this business. And I wonder whether there is adequate business knowledge required on behalf of these businesses starting up and taking care of children, whether there would be too many of them, and it would force some of them out of business, because there's so, so much supply now, that there's not enough demand for a functional business, and yet everybody has a child or two or three that they know will probably come to their own daycare. I just wonder about the viability on a longer-term basis, without regard. Would there be any thoughts?
Well, what I can offer you is that there's two general categories, there's basically in, in-home care for kids, and it's a, it's a smaller number of people as opposed to what would be in a daycare center, that's 13 or more children, up to 12 is what's allowed in someone's home. Business licensing is required for both kinds, unless this is truly you're babysitting your cousin or something like that. And then the requirements for health and safety for the children, for how the business is run, that's handled through state agencies. And so, the city would be involved in terms of allowing the building and the business to open after permit review, et cetera, but then there's going to be that state-level oversight with operations and safety for the children.
Thank you.
Mr. Estrada.
Thank you. The chart that you showed us, where now it's allowed? Are all those areas, as was mandated by the state?
Correct.
So we basically don't have any?
Really, the only place now that the city has discretion is in the industrial zone, whether or not you're going to allow, what those conditions would be to allow something on site. And then, it says there are reasonable restrictions you can place, like on pickup day, pickup and drop off, there can be the design of the site and the parking and that sort of thing, but whether or not you can do it, that's now very black and white in state law. Because it's the city code that has to be updated to allow it within our boundaries. Unless that was a rhetorical question.
I will say, I agree with the industrial ad, I mean, if you're gonna have a business there, and they have that many employees, give them every opportunity to keep, keep things going, so.
You bet.
Any other comments, questions? All right, let's go ahead and wrap that one up and slide into the next one.
Thank you, so again, that one will be in front of you for a public hearing next time. The final topic for this evening is one where we're going to be asking you to have a little more active dialogue amongst yourselves, and on line tonight to help me out with this is Angie Silva, the Assistant Director for the Planning and Public Works Department. Let me share one more little presentation to set the stage. So, we're talking about the locations where breweries and/or distilleries might be allowed in Lakewood. Just a really quick summary of what's already happened with this issue. If you'll recall, this was actually a topic included in the annual development regulation package, so you did consider this once before, had a hearing and made a recommendation, and that went to council in August. After deliberation at their level, they asked, first of all, they removed it from the package of approval, and then they asked that it be brought back to the planning commission for a little more detailed conversation about, in particular, where breweries or distilleries would be allowed within the downtown, and then the second, second part to that is where it might be allowed in the station district subarea. You had some of the planning, sorry, of the city council members who wanted to, pretty liberal about where they would allow bars and taverns in particular, including in some of the neighborhood commercial zones. You had others who were wanting to be a little more restrictive with where that particular use might be allowed. There was some conversations about where tasting rooms versus a bar or a tavern would be allowed, so there's all of those different nuances, and that's why it's in front of you again tonight. And just for reference sake, this is the current code, this is what is allowed, either permitted outright or conditionally. The term production brewery in this MF3 zone is actually only in the station district, but then you see it also as a conditional use in neighborhood commercial 2. TOC is transit-oriented commercial, that is also the station district. CBD is the central business district or downtown, and then you see it in commercial 1, commercial 2, and in the industrial business park. Small craft distilleries, you'll see in the NC zones, TOC, CBD, C1 and C2, and IBP, so neighborhood commercial up more intense. Wine production facilities at this point are in the internet, geez, I can't talk tonight, I'm sorry, the industrial business park, and then also the industrial 1 zone. And then in terms of uses that are considered eating and drinking, establishment land uses, the bar and the tavern, that is a conditional use downtown, and then it's in the commercial zones. A brew pub or brewery is in NC1 up through commercial 3, and then the tasting room is currently defined and included in code, is permitted in, again, NC1 up through commercial 3, so that's status quo. What's being suggested in the amendment you already passed up to council and is now back and forth in front of you again, there's a few tweaks to that, but if you'll recall, there was the installation, addition of auto stall, one per 20, in the brewery and distillery definition for parking spaces. There is the change out of terminology, so removing wineries and using wine production facilities to be consistent with definitions and state-level regulation of these types of facilities. And then this is really small text, but the point here is that there's changes to definitions, both just keeping one but tweaking it, or removing something altogether, or adding a new one in, and all of these are to be consistent with, again, state statute and rules that govern alcohol businesses and production. And another few things regarding that, so changes to existing or replacing current definitions to be consistent with state regulation. And so, what we would now do with a new version of the zoning code, because distilleries are laid out specifically as an agricultural use, actually, what's being proposed is to allow a distillery from the neighborhood commercial 1 through the industrial 2 zone, also including the two subareas, the station district and the downtown. For commercial and industrial uses, you'll see here in yellow, adding the term brewery, removing brewery production, and small craft distillery, in order to just be consistent with definitions, again, that the state now uses. And so, what you'll see, though, is brewery now would be allowed everywhere from NC1 up through industrial 2, and again, this would include both station district areas. You would remove small craft distillery and brewery production as no longer being used as code terminology, and then wine production facilities would continue to be allowed in industrial business park and industrial 1. In terms of the eating and drinking establishments, and this again is kind of the core, I think, of where council is seeking recommendation from you, is allowing bars and taverns, do you want to recommend allowing those in the neighborhood commercial zones, as well as the downtown, I'm sorry, as well as the station district, and then do you want to keep it as a conditional use in the downtown? Do you want to add it in any other areas of the city as well? And then there's the removal, again, of brewery and brew pub in the currently allowed NC1 up through commercial 3. No change to where tasting rooms would be allowed, so everywhere from neighborhood 1 to commercial 3. So again, this is kind of the core, but you're welcome, of course, to talk about all of this, but the council was really hoping for feedback on where to allow tasting rooms, where to allow bars or taverns, and if you feel there's anything else that needs to be changed with how this is being presented as, as updating to the code. So, with that, I'm gonna stop sharing, I'm happy to bring that back, but Angie Silva is also here to help answer some questions, because I am not an expert on these sorts of establishments, so I wanted to call a friend.
Quick, quick clarification. I mean, when we sent this up before, I think we'd already kind of discussed it, can you, can you be a little more specific on what it is they, what their concern was, so that we can try and-
Sure.
-solve that?
Yeah, I think, I think for the most part, they were fine with the idea of allowing tasting rooms and breweries and microbreweries in particular, as well as wine production in more areas of the city, as an economic development tool, but also as something where people are able to go to a tasting room that's associated with those, and have that as entertainment, something that they would just like to do as a social activity.
Could you put that table back up-
Sure.
-so we have that as we're talking?
Sure.
Thanks.
Where did I go?
I mean, full disclosure, I'm not a drinker, but I, I supported all these, because I see how they do work for economic development, and, and I will frequent a place for business meetings, or to meet up with friends, and they often serve food, so I think this is a great thing for the, the city, which is why we kind of pushed it, and we had to change the language anyways, so it seemed like a, a large non-issue. I was only concerned about it going into residential neighborhoods. And so, I guess I'd open it up to any comment, yeah, go ahead.
I wonder if I can ask for some background on why it's been a conditional use for bars to be in the CBD?
This probably goes back to the history of Lakewood pre-incorporation. This is an effort that was reflected in code for a long time, I don't know how long the code has read like this, but it's been decades, about where to allow bars, taverns, tasting rooms, et cetera, because the effort was to clean the city up, now that it was a city. And so, some of what you actually heard from the council when they talked about this in August was, do we want to- do we want to go backwards or not, to put it, you know, in a very succinct way of a more nuanced conversation? And also, do we want to allow certain types of these uses, again, into neighborhoods versus into the more commercial areas? So the crux of what information the council, I think, is looking for is where would you want to allow a bar, a tavern, a tasting room? Is really what they're looking for. And it's, you know, there's always the stereotypical reference back in the day of the cops show and Lakewood was a frequent area that was featured on the show and et cetera. There's been a lot of work by the city since it incorporated to reduce crime, reduce certain types of businesses that are conducive to crime. And so that was, was part of the desire to have a little more refinement in this conversation.
Thank you.
Ms. Spirit, can you, I guess, verify that bar tavern and brewery, brew pub? So in real, real world terms, where does the RAM fit into this chart?
Restaurant.
Yeah, what, what you see here, again, though, are some outdated terms. But the way brew pub was defined in our code currently and would go away is it's an eating or drinking establishment that includes production of liquor onsite. And I believe that's what the RAM does. But you can also have, under these other terms that the state now uses, I don't know if it would be a brewery or if it would be one of the other ones. I don't know.
I think what I'm really asking is, when you go back to that chart, do, is anything that's serving food that we would call a restaurant or that type of an environment going to fall into the second part of that chart?
I can assist with that, Ms. Spirit.
Please.
Currently, as the RAM is the example, it's kind of classified as two primary uses in our current code. So a restaurant and brewery operation itself. In the draft proposal that went before this body previously, it, again, still would be an allowed restaurant, but also that brewery production element of it would be moving forward. So it's still retain that allowed use in the zone for the RAM. But there are other locations within the city itself that does provide some similarities to a brewery production to a degree. The Oak Tree Food and Drink Company would be another example of what those uses are within the current city and the current zoning structure, sir.
Yeah, and it's a little confusing when you look at tables like what I've been showing you because what you see are the use and then the zone. Neither one of those is, is telling you a particular building is only one use or, you know, that sort of thing. So you may have more than one use in a single building in a single zone. Or you might have more, more than one, you know. So what this is telling you is that a land use in our code, bar tavern is considered an eating and drinking establishment, whereas small craft distillery is not. But they both might be allowed, for instance, in the commercial one zone. So the, the table isn't necessarily saying a building or a particular business can or can't do it, it's the use.
Right, but as the crux of what the council's asking us to do, right, is provide more clarity in where we want these types of uses to happen.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay, I have one concern. We've just said that we can have daycare centers basically anywhere. And now we have this here where we have no limitations. Effectively, we have, we're trying to decide where the limitations would be. I don't think we want to have a brewery or a distillery next to a childcare center. And so that gets back to the bad old days of Lakewood, of which, unfortunately, I was a kid, I remember those days. We won't go into detail. And so I think that we do need to set some parameters to avoid that problem. And I don't think we're going to settle that in this form right now. I think it needs to be, no offense, referred back to our, our wonderful city staff to really look at, how do we address that issue? Because it's going to be an issue.
You're absolutely right, and some of that may already be addressed. I can't tell you for sure right now, but you have the zone, zoning table that says you can do X in this area. But then remember, there's the regulations that then are implemented in terms of that use. So it may be that if suddenly you have both in neighborhood commercial one, a daycare and a brewery, you would see in the regulations, a brewery can be no more than 500 feet next to a childcare, daycare center. I don't know if that says that right now, but that's, that's the way that would be handled. Where it might be, two things are allowed in one zone, but it's the regulations of where it can be on the site, how close it can be to other types of uses. And that would also govern. And so just because the zone says yes, those regulations also govern. And yes, we will come back to you with more detail on that.
Mr. Estrada and Mr. Hur.
I guess I'm, I am really confused because according to the definitions here, it says that in business of manufacturing beer, malt liquor, manufacturing, then down below we scratched out manufacturing 15,000 barrels a year. So if that's production, that's what we're talking about, a brewery's production, then I would not classify the RAM as being brewery because they don't produce, they sell. So.
Down in their backyard, do they produce in their backyard?
They do both.
They do both?
They, they do both, both simultaneously. That particular establishment.
I stand corrected. I stand corrected.
And Mr. Chair.
That's still not valid anymore?
The reason that is, is removed is because state law definitions have changed. But I'm going to ask Mr. Chair if you wouldn't mind calling on Ms. Silva, because I think she's got some additional information.
Yeah, Ms. Silva, can you sneak on in before Mr. Hur goes?
Yeah, happy to do so, sir. The reason why the barrel production was stricken out of the new definition is the Washington State Cannabis and Liquor Control Board sets license parameters on production and the several tiers of different licenses. So at a local level, we don't regulate that piece. What we regulate is the land use aspect, which is part of the discussion here today. So for example, a brewery license, a microbrewery license is allowed under state law to produce up to 60,000 barrels a year. There's different privileges or add-ons to that license that could be granted by the state. For example, operating a tasting room, for example, a restaurant license in addition to the ability to do direct shipments regionally, locally, or even internationally. Another tier of common licenses at the state level is a winery license. There is not a specific barrel production limit on that, but again, allows at a state law level a tasting room and additional retail locations as well. As it relates to distillery licenses, it's a little bit more complicated and breaks it up into probably about three different primary category, excuse me, two primary categories, which is a distillery license, the ability to manufacture and sell and distribute spirits, but also maintaining about 51% Washington grown raw materials. Another tier of that distillery license is considered a craft distillery, which does limit the production of no more than 150,000 gallons per day. So what the draft definitions, what we can regulate at a local level is really the loud use and where it is appropriate in certain zones, et cetera. So not getting into the weeds per se of how many productions of barrels as that is where the state falls into their appropriate role and responsibility.
We have excluded in here, under the left, does not, can you go back, sorry?
I'm sorry.
Does not include nightclubs or adult-oriented businesses, which to me was one of the big troubles that these facilities had, you know, for the last 50 years. That's, seems to be largely gone, especially in metro area. I'm sure you guys have been up to, you know, some of the other places now, Fremont Brewery or Red Hook or any of those other locations, wine tasting up in Woodinville or the tasting rooms up there, the whole, I mean, it's a very different scene than it used to be. Even in Fremont, there's a winery where they produce and they have a restaurant on the edge which faces a child learning center and which, you know, very similar to a daycare. And you'd think those would be in conflict, but well managed and don't really operate at the same hours. And so they're very different and they, they seem to have been able to work a lot of that out. I think the state regulations on it have been pretty tight. The liquor board is very, very strict. And so they have quite some criteria as well as our own zoning. So I, even though I have a kid that age, I'm less worried about that. But I do think it's, I think it's a real thing, you know, we got to, got to be aware. I, I worry more about it going from a commercial area than, and, and into a neighborhood than I do it traveling anywhere where there could be a daycare because you can always choose a different daycare if you're really that concerned. You can't pick up and move as easily. So I, I would, I would be a proponent for allowing it in more areas. But it looked to me like tasting room was allowed across the board, which is pretty broad. I wouldn't go much further than that. I, you, you might even be able to put that into the industrial because that's where the wine is made, right? Oh, I don't know why you wouldn't put it in any of those. But the other way, I wouldn't go far into the residential. I would, I would stop at the neighborhood commercial. And maybe the thing we could consider, and I'm just tossing this out, as have a conditional use on bar and tavern, NC1 through CBD. And maybe the CBD should be an outright P for permitted use because that is, I mean, that's urban core that we expect. And wouldn't you, wouldn't you expect to see that in that area? That being said, I'm, I toss that out as just an idea. I don't know what you guys think about that, but. All right, let's go, Mr. Estrada and then Ms. Larson.
Spirit, can you give me an example? Well, first of all, we talked about daycare centers being allowed anywhere, NC1, NC2, for example. So if we allow NC1, NC2, also there are bars, give me an area that's considered NC1, NC2 here in Lakewood.
If you give me a minute while Angie talks, I can find one for you. I just, I don't have it on the top of my. Sure. Sure.
Bar and where a daycare center can be located.
Sure, yeah. So if you'll indulge me and continue talking, I will try to find a map that will show that for you.
Mr. Chair, I think I have a question for Ms. Silva.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Silva, can you talk to us about, and maybe just to me, everybody else may already know this, but can you talk to me about what might be considered in the conditional use conversation versus just an outright permit approval or disapproval? What, what type of things would fall into that analytical review?
Great question. Our code specifically outlines criteria for conditional use permits specifically, consistency with the comprehensive planner sub area plan, adjacent neighborhoods and land uses are just some of those criteria. Kind of nuance between permitted and conditional use is our required time of decision. Meaning if I was a permitted use by state law and most of our land use provisions, if it doesn't require a public notice or public hearing, we need to issue a decision within 65 calendar days after complete application, meaning 65 calendar days in the city's hand versus return to the applicant for request for information. On the conditional use side, sir, we typically call these a type three process, which triggers not only a public notice, but a public hearing before the Lakewood Hearing Examiner. Under state law, a decision for a conditional use must be issued within 170 days, calendar days after the time of complete application. The nuance between the conditional use as well as the permit, another nuance other than those distinguishing factors is the ability to add additional conditions as part of that CUP or conditional use permit to further mitigate adverse impacts, whether that's through the environmental review under SEPA or other conditions that are not specific under the SEPA parameters for the built or natural environment. Oftentimes, many of those conditions to mitigate those adverse impacts are often already built in development regulations, especially in zoning codes. Stepping back further, in the original proposal that went through this body and helped inform kind of the crafting of those definitions, but also the allowances themselves, was kind of looking at jurisdictions surrounding Lakewood and how they treat tasting rooms to breweries and distilleries. What is very common amongst jurisdictions, and we assessed nine jurisdictions, all the way from Tacoma to Seattle Renton Federal Way and also Birmerton, Paulsboro, and took a look at their codes and really what are they requiring and where are they locating? What is common themes amongst those jurisdictions is that they're often outright permitted in industrial zones without a conditional use permit. An example of that would be in Tacoma specifically, in a couple of their M1 and M2 industrial zones. Another common theme in that jurisdictional review was also outright permitted use in their commercial and mixed use zones, which also did not limit any type of square footage as well. And then last but not least, another common theme that you saw from those types of uses in those jurisdictions is outright permitted use in the downtown and pedestrian oriented districts and where you want the walkability. Second piece in a previous discussion that was kind of been having about, you know, locate, co-locating, discussion of daycare centers versus these brewery or craft distillery nearby. And often, while the zoning code may allow those provisions, we also have to recognize the fact that market conditions will drive the location. And if it's an existing structure, folks looking to locate a brewery are going to look for not only the space and square footage and the lease considerations, if that's a factor in the real estate transaction, but also the parking and adjacent uses and the synergy related to that. Similarly, daycare centers often look at what is those appropriate locations and synergy amongst the neighboring uses and how they do that. So just a little nuance on that. Hope I answered your question in a long and hopefully not a boring way, sir.
Mr. Larson, do you still have a question?
Yes, excuse me, a couple of points. First is, this looks to be really, really well thought through. There are checks and balances and compatibility considerations, and it really feels good to me. I think that we have cleaned up Lakewood. I think it's time to start anew. I think it's time to put more Lakewood back together the way that we want it to be. That's first thing. The second thing is that of the questions for how to zone the four categories, my view is that the belongings is an outright use in CBP, Center Business District, CBP, excuse me, is just that. And it's just goods and services rendered to the public and, and this does that. The other three, I make conditional uses because there are variables around them that need, that get, require the checks and balances that are set forth in the conditional use process. So that would be my recommendation is that we do conditional use for the first three and outright use for the next one in that row and that we move this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just want to offer, I completely agree. I think we want to allow the bars and the taverns and the downtown where folks can go and they can choose to go and choose the ways in which they expose themselves to things. Neighborhoods may be a little bit of a different story. We want some opportunity for public hearing and weighing in and then more thoughtfulness there.
Appreciate it. Any other thoughts on that?
And it just, it's been up for now for a little bit, but to answer Mr. Estrada's question, the hot pink that you'll see in a number of different areas, that is neighborhood commercial two. So Bridgeport up a little further north, up toward the top of the city and then over toward Fort Stillicum Park and the Western State Hospital area. And then a little bit, excuse me, where did that come from? Down in the Stillicum area as well. And then the softer pink, that's neighborhood commercial one, there's less of that. But for instance, it's over here in the southwestern part of the city. And I think if I'm reading this right, a little bit just next to the NC2 up by, again, Western State and Fort Stillicum Park.
Largely along the arterials where there's already a lot of commercial development existing.
Yes, and then you'll see also, I didn't mention it's in Springbrook. And then. Yes. And then you'll see also, I didn't mention it's in Springbrook and then that far eastern section right above the North Clear Zone.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I think it's worth pointing out, I immediately what comes to mind for me is Lake City Pub as like the standout thing that fits inside this discussion. It's not in the central business district. It's in a predominantly neighborhood areas, a light, there's a light commercials area right there. But I, I think as, as we move through the seat, folks are looking for more opportunities like, of course, they, they expect to see these things in the central business district, but I think more and more as we, as we move forward and, and try to take best advantage of the space we have and we think about what does it look like to, to grow Lakewood. I think those opportunities to have these, these things and maybe not the most traditional locations are, are really exciting. And I just think about, man, if I'm trying to bring something like that to life, having to go through the conditional permit process, which is almost what, three times automat, you know, three times longer than normal. I mean, we're going to balance that scale there, right? I, that's a long time. I don't know.
Are you, are you suggesting an outright permitted use in all the neighborhood commercials?
Well, I think the discussion is, is warranted, right?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Larson.
I think I'd agree with that. Lake City Pub is a perfect example. If it had a brewery next to it, it would mean more business, would mean more attraction to the neighborhood for the neighborhood. That gave me a source of a thought that I read, do believe needs mentioning. And that is that, that these premises that have people gathering together. They have dialogue. It means our community is talking to each other and with each other. And that's a really, really basic value that we forget about when we think about these places.
So, so let me, and I, I'm not going to disagree. I, I, I would say I, I could support that just because there's a limited amount of neighborhood commercial. I wouldn't be opposed to that. One area that came up specifically was the TOC, which is the Transit Oriented Development Areas. And I don't have an objection to that area either. If, but maybe that's one that stays as a conditional. Because if you're going into that area, that would be something where it could be impacted. So just something, I would love to get your guys' thoughts on that.
I, Mr. Chair, I, I think I would make the, the same argument. The, the intent of the, the transit center is to have people where they do not have to move out of that area for the amenities that they desire and require on a daily basis and certainly sustenance and community celebration is, falls into that area. And I think the expectation would be that those amenities are immediately available. And, and, and possibly creates opportunities. We talk about mixed use all the time. And if we protract that, I, I think that puts barriers in the way of, of bringing those mixed use opportunities that might not otherwise exist. I don't know. I'm not a mixed use developer, but, but I think that would be a consideration, you know? If, if we know we have to tackle an extended permitting process versus something that's already been looked at and considered and, and decided, yes, we want this. I, I do think that in that, particularly in that area, that is, these type of amenities would be expected and desired and, and I think we should be looking forward enough to understand that and, and say, are we able to accommodate that? And because the C, I don't know if the, the SEPA that happened for the central business district, that that include the transit station as well, or that same process happened there as well, right?
A planned action ordinance was adopted for both subareas, yes.
So is there any benefit to, what, what benefit would come to life if we did have a conditional use allowance in, in, in the transit center as an example?
Well, just to mention, that is actually one of the topics that the council discussed as well in August, where they were trying to distinguish if there needed to be a distinguished effort between the downtown and the station district subareas. And the mention was that there is additional residential right now in the station district as compared to downtown. It's got more of the multifamily as well, already getting built as well as standing. And so there was a, there was just a back and forth a little bit. They didn't have a direct question to ask really, but there was some pause that maybe more of the commercial bar tavern types might be in downtown versus in the station district. But coming back to your question, Commissioner Hare, the planned action ordinance said if you do any of these types of uses and you generate this many vehicle miles a day or, or trips a day. And if you have this many housing units or this many job units, we're going to be okay and you can proceed. I would have to go back and look to see if there was any discussion actually about a specific use like this. I can't recall and I, it's not coming to mind, but it, it would be the policy question ultimately of what types of uses do you want next to each other in any part of your city, including next to the Sounder Station?
I, I would, I, I don't disagree with what I've heard so far. I, I, I I tend to subscribe to let the businesses, the, the market conditions as Ms. Silva indicated will, will let a lot of that play out and having worked in enough mixed use projects and developments over the years, I've seen it very successfully done and tastefully done. I have, I don't have good exam, I don't have bad examples to share in the last thirty years. So I guess I would lean towards supporting that across the board. I would add in and just throw out there, I wouldn't be opposed to it happening in any of the three industrial because those areas are where it's produced. And if you're able to produce it and have a tasting room in your facility or a restaurant or a place that serves it, that it's not my cup of tea, but I, I've seen that very successfully done up in Seattle and, and Woodinville. So I would, I would support that area as well. Yeah, go ahead.
I really appreciate the thoughts. I appreciate Mr. Larson's emphasis that this is a place where community can gather. That's really important. I appreciate Mr. Hare's thought that, you know, Lake City is a tremendous contributor to that area. I would also say that not every bar and tavern is Lake City. And I just want to be careful that we're talking about bars going into neighborhoods across the city in these ways, in these zones. And they're not all Lake City. So what, how do we feel about other versions of bars going next to your house? And I think for me anyway, it's really important that we protect neighborhoods and give them a voice. And the conditional use permit isn't saying no. It's just saying, let's be thoughtful, let's be careful. Cause once they go in, they're very hard to root out.
We have not proposed allowing this in residential areas though. To be clear, what, what's on here is neighborhood centers, NC one and two, which we looked at on the map, right? And that's the pink areas on the map we were looking at. Those areas to me are not, they are adjacent to residential areas certainly, but almost everything in Lakewood is adjacent to a residential area, right?
I don't disagree with either of you. I, I think your, your point is that they're right next to it. They're adjacent to. So at some point, a residence will be next to a commercial and that's, that's the one that how do you, how do you weed that out?
The types of, the types of problems that taverns have are not the kind that stay with inside those four walls.
And again, part of the benefit of the definitions, and this is something that staff will go back and verify before this comes before your next meeting. But bars and taverns are a different kind of use than a brewery with a retail section or a distillery with a retail section, right? Or the tasting room. So it's, what I think I'm hearing from people is there's a more, a higher comfort level with the tasting rooms and the breweries versus the bars and the taverns. And so we can just go back and try to refine that a little bit and bring it back to you next time. It won't look exactly like this. There'll be some additional detail for you to chew on and also for the public to be able to testify about.
If I may, just one more thing.
Yeah.
You know, I've, I've seen in other jurisdictions, they have distinctions that are really splitting hairs in unhelpful ways. For example, you can have a car lot, you can have a car wash. I don't think that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about something a little bit more.
Ms. Beer, just one more time for, for my brain's clarity. Is this the, the proposed new chart that we're looking at right now?
It's one of them. What we have in front of you tonight, Commissioner, is this single one is showing you what is currently allowed.
Really specifically what I'm asking is, but can you go back to the other one?
Sure.
As, as this chart sits where it says brewery, is that a restaurant that brews beer?
Let me put you back up into the definitions. It's any person, which includes a business, engaged in the business of manufacturing beer and malt liquor. And then you also have microbrewery or small craft brewery. And again, that's, and there you see the ability to have retail on and off site. On, on and off premises. And then you have a small craft distillery. You have the tasting room, which again is a slightly different animal. You have the tavern that's defined as well. So that's the accommodation for sale by the glass as opposed to, you know, by the barrel, I guess. So there's, there's little subtle differences between each. And, and again, as we bring this back to you next time, we'll, we'll put a little more thought into what might be allowed in which zone. If you're willing to trust that process or if you want to give additional direction, I guess my question would be, do you want to have bars or taverns versus the brewery or the tasting room allowed in NC N one, I'm sorry, NC one or two? And then transit oriented commercial and central business district. And if you don't have an answer right now, then that's something you would be discussing next time.
Reiterate, you're saying, we're not talking about bars in talking about breweries. Fecture of not the drinking.
If there's a tasting room there and then, you know, with the retail sales, I don't know if that automatically equals a tasting room or not. But yes, two different things.
Can you go back to the other table? I think that, there you go. This is, so this is where the bar and tavern comes into play.
But we're talking about the tasting room or the brewery also.
The microbrewery may sell beer of its own production at retail on and off premises. Small craft would fall within the same definition as you see. Tasting room, it's attached to a distillery or a craft distillery's facility. And then if you go back up into bar or tavern, it's sold for onsite consumption that are not part of a larger restaurant. And then you have the brewery, which it doesn't necessarily show sale onsite. That was, that's where you get back down into some of these other definitions. So. Correct. That's, that, that is the crux of what the council was hoping for some direction from you on. Don't ask me, I don't know.
Would you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I would not be in favor of a bar there and it, it's, this conversation is interesting in that just this past week I was with a friend of mine. I was driving around Lakewood and we were in Lake City. She says, oh, it looks so much better. Lakewood's finally cleaned up Lake City. And I don't see all the people I used to see there. So you may think that we don't have an image issue, but we do. And that area does have one. And so you're kind of selling them down the road. You need to be careful about that.
Well, we, we can approach this a couple of different ways. You know, the conditional use does then go in and factor those things. There is a little bit of time delay, but then it's a little more thorough with the neighborhood. There's public hearing, comment. And so you're not saying absolutely not, but you're saying you gotta get your stuff together and make sure you're the real deal. And, and so I, I wouldn't be opposed to a conditional or, you know, I, I don't want to push this. I, I think on the industrial, there, there's commercial activity going on there anyways. I, to me, those should all be Ps. I, I can't figure out why we wouldn't. So that would be what my, my first one. In downtown core, I, I would say permitted. The other ones, I, I kind of feel conditional and I'm, I'm, it's pretty weird that I'm way more liberal than everyone else here, but I, I would say that I, I, I probably, I'm, I'd be fine with a conditional use because that way it still gets vetted out. The neighborhood gets a chance to speak to it. The people who come in have to get their stuff together. They have to prove why it's good for that area to do. And so I kind of think that, that one makes a little more sense. Or if you guys both uncomfortable with it, not to try and get a unanimous, we don't have to be united always, but I like to, I like to be closer. If we wanted to, we could just say no to those right now and revisit this, you know, see what the interest level is.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I think we can break this up.
Yeah.
I think we have some different questions at play. So if we break up the questions, so for example, if we were to vote on TOC, that could look like one vote. You know, if we were to vote on NC, that could be a separate vote.
Well, yeah, I guess before we do a vote, could we just get a, is there, is there any disagreement on the industrial? Any discussion to have on that? How about on the TOC?
I'm not in favor.
Not in favor of the end of downtown or. I'm sorry. Yeah. What about downtown? Sorry.
Well, if I may, I'm not, I'm not sure we want to take a poll before a vote.
And just a reminder that a public hearing needs to happen. So this isn't a formal motion for recommendation. This is, you're taking the temperature amongst each other.
What we're trying to do is gauge where our.
Question for clarity.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the conditional use permitting process, does that guarantee, or is it, is baked in that there will always be public hearing and opportunity for public input from the people in that area? Or are we just speaking that into existence?
It is required by our code and pro, permit process procedures for those types of permits, sir.
Yeah, we don't, we're not voting on it tonight. It's more of like, what are the hot issues? So we know, okay, let's think about this. Cause I, I'm fine going back to the drawing board and sending the city back to say, hey, do a little more homework on this, but I don't know that there, I don't know that we have any good direction for them on what the, so do homework on yet. So I guess it sounds like TOC, I'm sorry, downtown and industrial are, are not an issue. So maybe we can talk, leave those alone. But down in the Transit Oriented Center, we've got not as much interest there. What, what about over here?
I guess I have to, you have to understand my background. I see all the drunks and alcoholics and that's where they hang out. Is the train stations, the bus stations and that, and it makes it very unpleasant. And I get to see the results of that unpleasant frequently. So I do not like having those people around, people that are trying to get to work that are trying to commute because it makes them not want to go to those places to commute. They don't want to park their cars there. They don't want to be there. And I think it has a negative effect on all things that we're trying to accomplish. I think you have to be really careful about where you put things like that. You don't want to put, you, you risk, I don't think we're ready. We haven't figured it out where the right places is, what the right news are. And it's really awful when you go to a bus station and you have problems there. That hurts all the stuff that we're trying to do.
Dr. Wallace, what you're saying there, but I, I think the connection, you know, you're drawing a pretty straight line from degenerate people at public transit stations to alcohol serving establishments. And I don't know that that's necessarily the direct line.
It just occurred, they occur frequently together. It's not necessarily direct. Like plenty of people go to drinking establishments and, and are not homeless or do not hang around in those places, but they can be magnets for people looking to score different things. So I don't think that when we're trying to establish ourselves that that's, you know, down the road, when you're already established well in these areas, you can revisit them, I think. But I don't think we're ready for that yet. And you know, I just have lots of real world experience. It's not good.
Yeah. Ms. Beer.
If I could make a suggestion in terms of process. If I could make a suggestion in terms of process, I don't hear any sort of consensus to bring something forward to a public hearing at your next meeting. So what I would see if there's appetite for is I would, it's not been advertised yet, I should say, first of all. So there's no confusion for the public if you don't have a public hearing on this next time. But what I would suggest is that staff have an opportunity to put something together, maybe for the October fifteenth meeting, and send this out to you ahead of time to chew on, think about, or you can come back with some more concrete examples, maybe a couple of different versions of the table and talk about those, decide if any of them fit for everybody, or if you want to make edits to that. And then we can keep going from there with, with public conversation.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay.
Chair, can I make a request for the, the staff packet that gets put together? Can you put some examples against those titles in the charts? What this looks like in the real world? What type of establishments would be under these headers to kind of help us paint that picture?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
And not to pile on, but can you please send it in advance?
Yes.
Like, you know, several days in advance so that we have a chance to really stew and navigate through it. I think that's helpful to really get your thought process done before you get here.
Yeah, and that's why I'm suggesting not next time, but the October fifteenth meeting, so two meetings from now, it would be back in front of you and you would have the information ahead of time, at least a week, to be able to think about it yourselves and then come in with your, your conversation. That's right.
Please, let's do that.
Okay.
We're, we're in no, no rush.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for that topic?
No, Mr. Chair.
And I don't see our council representative on today. And so our next meeting will be October first. Look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you all for being here. Anything else before we close, Ms. Spear?
Nope, see you on the first.
All right. Have a great one. This meeting's adjourned.